All right.
I have no other questions.
John, outside anything else, John?
Just a point, the where you say reset existing brick as required, that's actually stamped concrete.
Okay.
Just for your own info.
Yeah, I think there's some construction details that we got to add in there.
Yeah.
So that the contractors are aware of exactly what they got to do.
Yeah, and Paul, I did speak to Jim Ryan one or two weeks ago and told him that we do have details for that, that construction, so.
Okay.
So we can.
Okay, then we can coordinate that.
Yes.
Okay, Jim, you have anything?
No.
Agreements, everything looks good?
Everything looks good.
Thomas, everything was duly noted, advertised, you got all the, everything back?
Yes, every, all public hearing notices are accounted for.
All right, at this point then, I'd like to open it up to the public, is there anybody from the public that has any concerns or questions about the application in front of us right now? Again, you have to wave or send an email or a.
Chat.
Chat to Robin.
I don't see anyone with their hand up.
All right, we'll give them a minute just in case. So quiet?
Yep.
All right, I'm going to suggest we close the public hearing, but not vote on the, not deal with the resolution yet, and we'll leave it, if it's all right with the board, for a 10-day open comment, as been recommended.
Written comment.
What's that?
Written comment.
Written comment, thank you, Robin, just in case someone wasn't able to advise us during this meeting. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to the next public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Good night, Paul.
Oh wow, that changed quick. We're gonna move on to the next public hearing we have tonight, which is Atlantic Appliance, locations 2010 Maple Hill Street, do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Slow move.
Your second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Joe, you're on. You're still muted. Joe, you're on mute, there you go.
I just need one second.
No problem.
Can I share, Robin?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody on board?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, I'm Joseph Rehn, the Principal of Site Design Consultants, and the Project Engineer for Atlantic Appliance, we are here tonight for a public hearing, for a proposed commercial building, which will be the new home of Atlantic Appliance, which is currently in the Triangle Shopping Center. As you know, Atlantic Appliance has been a business in town for 45 years, it has recently changed owner, the new owner is Joey Bukai, and with me tonight, also presenting our environmental consultant, which is Steve Marino from Tim Miller Associates, our landscape architect, Frank Giuliano, our architect, Gene Vittrano, and myself. So, the project consists of two parcels, one is located at 2010 Maple Hill Street, and the other is at 2015 Greenwood Street. The subject parcel where all the development is taking place is on the 210 Maple Hill Street parcel, is located between post office and the professional building to the right, as you make your way south on Maple Hill Street. The rear parcel is going to be mainly dedicated for mitigation, which will be detailed much later on in the presentation by Steve Marino. So, the 2010 property is Zone C2, and the 2015 property is Zone C4. So, the proposed use is consistent with the zoning that we're proposing. The, the site is currently, this is the site on Maple Hill Street, which is currently all wooded, you can see the trees located on there, it gently to moderately slopes in a northeast direction. The other parcel, which is on Greenwood Street, consists of also a wooded parcel, except there is a stream running through the property, which is the Halix Mill, which runs south to north, and then you have some wetland areas over in this area here, which Steve Marino will explain in more detail. There's a sewer easement at this edge of the property, and the public sewer goes through here, which eventually makes its way to the Greenwood Street plant. So, the project is proposed, is to construct a building that has a square footage, footprint square footage of 9,720 square feet. On the main level, it's going to be retail, on the lower level, which is access through the rear, is going to be warehouse, and on the second level, there's 6,270 square feet, which is going to be dedicated probably to office, it hasn't been finally decided on what it's going to be, but, but for now, it's, we're considering it, that it's going to be office space. I'm missing a slide here. In development of the site, we're going to eliminate 167 trees, which are within the limited disturbance, 12 of which are compromised, and Steve Marino will give you a little more detail on that. So, the project is proposed again, is for this 9,720 square foot building, the main entrance for employees and customers is going to be the little southerly entrance here, is going to be parking in front of the building, and to the side of the building here. There are two areas that we are reserving as banked, land banked parking, which means we're not going to develop those spaces currently, and, and they're going to be landscaped, so that's this area right in here, and this area right in here, at some point in the future, they may be needed, the property owner is convinced that, you know, based on his current foot traffic in and out of his store, and the number of employees that he has, this should be adequate for, for what he needs at this point. There's the laser, okay. This entrance here is, is going to be dedicated to the service vehicles and delivery trucks. So, delivery trucks will come in from Route 35, which is to the northwest, come in in this direction, loop into the site, back into a loading dock, which is, as I said, at a lower level, and deliver its goods there. Deliveries usually occur between 9:30 and 10:00 a.m., and it's only one delivery per day. This area here will be the, dedicated to these delivery and service trucks, where, for the most part, they'll be gone all day, doing their deliveries, doing their service calls, and return at the end of the day, late afternoon. Altogether, we've got 66 parking spaces shown, and as I said, 22 of those are going to be land bank spaces, so that's this area here, and this area here. The staffing is going to be typically one person in the warehouse, and five sales staff, and seven managerial staff that are handling the back office workings, as well as keeping an eye on and making sure all things are operating properly on the, on the showroom floor. So, to improve the site, first of all, we're connecting to public sewer, the public sewer is located right here in the front, and public water, we're going to have two service connections, one for domestic supply, and one for fire supply, the existing water main is located right from the property here. The, as I said, the site slopes in a northeasterly direction, however, to achieve the grades that we need, to achieve ADA access, when you commit, initially come into the site, and you turn left in the parking lot, which is, that area is going to be slightly raised, this drops off in this area here, so in order to accomplish that, we're going to have a retaining wall along this edge here, and it's going to be six to six and a half feet at its highest point. As you work your way around, this, this site slopes downward, and the same with the other entrance, as you work your way in, the site slopes downward. All the drainage collected on the site will be brought to the rear of the site, to the stormwater management area, which I'll explain. So, in order to, this, this project is located in the designated Main Street area in New York City watershed, so there's certain criteria we need to meet, and so we, we have to get a permit from the New York City DP, as well as the MS4, which is the town of Yorktown, which needs to comply with the New York State DC regulations. So, to accomplish that, we have to prepare a full stormwater pollution prevention plan, which we have already, and it's been submitted, and part of the, part of the analysis that we have to do is we have to provide what's called a runoff reduction, and what that is, is to take as much of the stormwater and treat it for water quality with green infrastructure practices. So, the green infrastructure practices that we've selected for the site is partial green roof on the rear of the building, we've got stormwater planters on different sides of the building, along the driveway here, we've got porous pavers along this edge of the parking lot here, this hatched area here is, is going to be either a rain garden, or some type of stormwater planter, and ultimately, everything ends up in our stormwater basin, which is a pocket wetland, and because of high groundwater conditions here, this is the most conducive form of treatment that we could provide for, for this site. And what happens is, this is a, this is a four bay here, initially, all the water gets discharged into this, it acts as a settling basin, then it follows this vegetated shallow channel here, into a final polishing basin, which is at the far end of, of the pocket wetland. These areas in between are low marsh area, so this, this mimics a wetland, but it's designed, and there are specific plantings that go in there, and specific hydraulics that take place, that provide the necessary treatment. In addition, we've sized this to have an excess in capacity, in order to be sensitive to the downstream condition, where this area is known for flooding, the Halix Mill, especially, you know, as you head north, there is a flooding situation there, so what we've done is oversized this for all storm events, to decrease the, the amount of peak volume that leaves our basin, therefore providing a benefit to the stream, and to the, and to the flooding conditions in the stream. So, this, this represents what, what the percent reduction that we're going to have, and as you could see, it ranges from, you know, 60, 62% reduction in the lower storm events, to a little over 10% in the 100-year storm event. So, again, this is providing benefit to the, to our downstream neighbors. As I stated, there's going to be retaining walls along certain areas, and I forgot to mention this one here, there's going to be a retaining wall here, and another one here, where you have that drop in elevation in the parking lot. To the rear of the site, this is going to be our primary trash containment area, and this is going to be a cardboard compactor, there's a lot of cardboard that, waste that comes out of the warehouse, and that's going to be compacted in this, and then disposed of, picked up on a, on a regular basis. This is our erosion sediment control plan, this deals with how we're going to maintain the site and keep it stable during construction, to avoid any off-site impacts, especially since, since the Halix Mill is in the rear here. These dark Xs that you see, those are the trees that are going to be removed, that are eight inches or greater. We've got stabilized construction entrances, soil stockpile areas, silt fence, which is kind of difficult to see at this, at this scale, but there's a silt fence all around the site, and this area is going to act as a sediment basin, so any turbid water from the site will go in here and settle out before it has any, any point of discharge off, off site. We've prepared a, a lighting plan, these are the. This is the style fixture for the light post fixtures, it's, it has a colonial-type look, these are wall packs, that are going to be more for security lighting around the back of the building, and sides of the building. These here are pole lights, are going here, one, two, three, four, the building has an overhang here, and it has a portico over the front door, there's going to be lighting underneath that, casting down, which is represented in here. As you can see, we don't have extremely high lock, high light levels, so the site, we believe complies with the town code as far as lighting is concerned. There are additional couple of pole lights here and here, and there. Uh-oh. Two, okay. This figure is, represents our truck movements, to demonstrate that the trucks can enter the site without any obstructions, can get into the loading dock area, can exit the site. We've agreed to mandate that the trucks will only go out to the right, and make their way straight up to 35, and not go up Maple to Veterans Road and through town. Profiles and details. This is a cross-section of the pocket wetlands, so you can see how it's going to work, four bay, this is the low marsh area, this is the micro pool at the end, and this is a typical stormwater planter. So, to date, we, we've addressed most comments during this, during the, the SHPO, SHPO returned a response that they, that this site is within an archaeologically sensitive area, and they've required a Phase A archaeological study, which we have underway. Otherwise, we've addressed all other memos and comments that we received, all our forms and applications are up to date, and all our fees are in place. At this point, I'm going to turn over the, the mic to Steve Marino, and I'm going to let him take you through the mitigation plan, and we'll go to Frank Giuliano, and then Gene Vittrano.
This is Steve, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep.
All right, great. Joe, can you put up, this is, this is my first sheet?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Steve Marino, Tim Miller Associates, here to talk about proposed mitigation for the Atlantic Appliance property. As Joe mentioned, there is a wetland on the site, it's actually on that Greenwood Street parcel, the, the line for intensive purposes, the line of the wetland is about the eastern property line of the Maple Hill Street parcel, there's a little, a little notch in there, generally, it's just off the property, the wetland boundary. The 100-foot buffer therefore does extend onto the property, the limits of that buffer are basically what's shown as the parking for the delivery vans, that's essentially the 100-foot buffer, so none of the development hardscape will be occurring in the, in the, in the buffer or the wetland, there will be no wetland disturbance, and no buffer encroachment with hardscape, it'll all be planted detention basin areas, et cetera. As part of that plan therefore, Joe had requirements that he needed to meet with DEP, and, and as part of the SWIP, he's accomplished that, since the last time you saw this plan, he has, he has added that stormwater planter for additional runoff reduction, and we've then, we've adjusted the landscape plan to accommodate that. Both that planter, the basin itself, will be heavily planted, and then we've proposed additional trees and shrubs in the buffer to, and further enhance that buffer. That buffer area back there is relatively open with trees, there aren't a lot of trees on that back part of the property, so we will be adding more trees to that area, and, you know, this heavy deer browse in this whole neighborhood, and that property, basically this parcel and the adjacent parcel are trees, there's very little in the way of shrubs, except for the invasive honeysuckle shrubs that are back there, so we're proposing to add native shrubs, as well as native trees, ever, both evergreens, and deciduous trees. And as part of that then, we will fence off that back area with deer fencing, to make sure that, that our new plantings have a chance to, to grow and mature compared to what the existing condition is. Second part of our mitigation, we do again recognize that we're in buffer, second part of our mitigation, you see there to the right of the screen, will be a, an invasive species monitoring and control plan, that area there, if you see on the, on the survey itself, was a sewer easement, so during the time of the sewer installation there, there must have been some disturbance in that area, so that's almost entirely phragmides at this point. I know we're all familiar with the phragmides, and the invasive, and invasive, I guess, manner in which it spreads through areas that have been disturbed. So, we have a detailed proposal, you can see there's notes there, on the right of the plan, there's a detailed proposal to go in, clear out the phragmides, clear out vines and other things, non-native vines and things that might be growing in there, and then give the native vegetation an opportunity to reestablish in there. And the third facet of our mitigation plan is there on the south side of the Greenwood Street parcel, as Joe mentioned, Halix Brook does flow through the Greenwood Street parcel, it exits the Junior Lake, which is just to the south there, off the map, goes underneath Veterans Road through a large culvert, and enters this site, and then meanders through, and continues to the north. Again, Joe mentioned that there's a history of flooding problems in the neighborhood, what we're proposing is if you, if you look at that plan, you'll see there's the number 13 there, that's flag number 13B, right adjacent to that is what used to be a swell that overflowed down into the, the Halix Mill Brook, and drained that area of wetland. Whether it was a tree falling down, or some disturbance to the site, that swell is now blocked off, and causes, when that basin fills up, it then flows to the north and creates some of that wetland that you see further to the north. What we're proposing is to reopen that swell, to lower the water level a little bit in that area, and then clear out the phragmides and dead vegetation that's in there now. Joe, do you have my, my four-page PDF queued up there at all?
This one?
Go one more page, Joe. Oh, back, yeah, let's keep going back. Back one more, I think, oh, there was one with photographs of the site, and the neighboring.
Yeah, I don't.
Don't have that one? Okay, that's fine. Okay, so, all right, so, just a quick history of the site, when you look at that 1947 aerial photo there, it's on the top of the screen, this site predating the Triangle Shopping Center, and post office, and et cetera, this site was agricultural, most of the neighborhood was at that time, you can see the cleared areas, that first cleared area, and right in the center of the property is the existing location of the post office, and those two professional buildings, our development parcel is centered in the middle of that patch, and then just to the right of that, where the brook flows through, is the Greenwood Street parcel, and you can, and you can see, again, it was, had recently been cleared, and it was just some vegetation starting to grow back there. When you then get to the 1976 photo, you can see the shopping center, see the two professional buildings to the south, Veterans Road there now, Greenwood Streets developed through there, but both, both these, both the subject parcels remained undeveloped, and had now developed a forest condition there. Go down to the more recent, the 2018 photo, and you can see now the post office is in place, so we're basically a last little island of wooded vegetation in the neighborhood, with the Greenwood Street parcel, and the Halix Mill Brook, the more sensitive parcel, just there to the east. Joe, if you go back to the big, the first screen. Yes, thank you. So, that, that wetland at the south end of the site, coming in off Veterans Road, I know I showed at the last meeting photographs of that, it's entirely phragmides at this point, there's some dead standing red maples that used to be growing in that area, have now flooded out due to the closure of that, that little weep-off there, the swell, and as well as, you have couches, we have sofas, we have shopping carts, et cetera, typical urban wetland indicator species in there, so our proposal then is to clean that area out, lower the level of the wetland in there while maintaining wetland, wetland conditions, and, and revegetating that area, removing the phragmides, and providing an overflow for that area to drain it down a little bit. What we've done is we've designed the, the elevations of that area, so that in the case of the 100-year storm in the Halix Mill Brook, there's a little bit of an area now for the water to back up into this area, we're creating an extra two feet of freeboard in that area to control additional flooding that might occur in the neighborhood, so that in addition to the. So that in addition to the overcapacity that Joe has in his basin on on the development site, I think is going to. Be a nice little contribution to the neighborhood to keep. To to maintain some of the the cure some of the flooding problems that are happening downstream further to the north.
Steve, I have to.
Okay, good. Thanks, Joe.
You see them?
No.
Okay. Hold on.
No worries. There we go. Thanks. So that upper left hand shot there, that's the the wetland right off of Veterans. Road. You can see there's a ponded area and just beyond that all fragmites. The lower left is a is a shopping cart in the Halix Mill Brook. That center photo is a recliner. That we found in that wetland again, adjacent to veterans. I guess it's a convenient place to park and throw things over the bank. The upper right hand corner is the is that sewer easement on Greenwood Street. Again, since the installation of the sewer line through there, there must have been. Again, enough disturbance to get fragmites in there, get that have it get a hold. And now that's entirely frags, so we'll go in there and clean that out. And that bottom right hand shot is again, is the Veterans Road wetland with. With the density of fragmites. Again, this was taken in the winter, so you don't get the full effect. In the summertime, both of these areas are eight to ten feet of Caribbean. Oh, there we go. Okay. Eight to ten feet of fragmites growing entirely through those areas. All right, Joe, if you want to go to the that last that last screen. There's the blow up of that.
Something happened here.
Okay.
Okay.
There you go. So this is just a blow up of the of the existing wetland line on the Greenwood Street parcel. The area that we're proposing to. Clear out the fragmites as well as expand that wetland. You can see there on the right hand side, right there. You can see that that upper line of the wetland, we're going to be expanding that further to the east. To make the wetland larger there as well. Again, it's it's more area for flood storage. As well as creating a larger. More vibrant wetland by removing the frags and putting native species back in there. Then you can see there that our proposed outflow channel that will allow. That area to drain down for the most part, still be wet enough to be wetland but drain down. So that there's a storage available should the stream. Come up and overflow its banks. We have some room for the water to back up into this area here. All right, Joe, back to that main screen. Yes, thank you. As Joe mentioned, we did a tree survey. We just recently in the last month updated that tree survey. To include all the trees, eight inches and greater on the site. We did find a total of one hundred and eighty two trees, some of which were dead. A large number of trees were also covered with vines. Since since deer have been going in there and chewing all the vegetation out, all like again, no shrub layer. Very little in herbaceous layer. It's all just trees. Things that are left are things like climbing bittersweet, which have gone in and are covering a good deal of the trees out on the site. Ninety percent or more of the trees are red maples. They're not. It's not a long lived species. So there's a lot of standing dead out there, a lot of dead branches. It's not really what you'd call a high, high value forested area. We did find some hemlocks and oaks out there, very few, but want to identify that they are out there. So I think a total of about one hundred and sixty to one hundred and seventy trees will be coming out. We're proposing as part of our mitigation. Thirty trees, sixty something shrubs, additional trees will be planted in the. In that stormwater planter, we'll put some additional trees in that area of fragmites. Where the sewer line was, where the sewer line is, as soon as we know what's growing in there, but this time until we. Can clear that frags out and get a better idea of what's actually growing there, we don't know what needs to be replaced. And then, as you'll hear from Frank in a couple of minutes, we will be, there is a landscape plan. On file for the developed portion of the property will include clearly more vegetation. So again, that will add back to the. To the tree town and vegetation on the property. Looking at the town's tree code, it does seem that this project as part of a commercial site plan. Does fit under the tree law in terms of an approved landscape plan. So the discretion is with the the board issuing approval. To decide how many trees need to go back there in there and of what type and size. So. You know, we've made our proposal here, and I'm sure we'll continue to talk about the landscape plan and tree and the tree code as it applies to this site.
Steve, have you seen the like this the memo today from the pre-commission?
No, I have not, Rich.
All right, we're gonna have to get you a copy of that.
Okay, yes, please.
Thank you.
All right, Joe, so I think that wraps it up. I think Frank is queued up next.
Yeah. Okay. Frank, you're on?
Yes, it's Frank Giuliano, landscape architect. Joe, you're working it from your end?
Yes, so tell me where you want to go.
All right. First, let me just explain that we did appear in front of Ibaka. And there was only one comment after the review that we attended. And that was to add some screening. In front of the wall between the wall and Maple Hill Street. Which we did do. What this plan is, we've added as many large trees in to the site as possible. Without hindering view lines or anything for the cars. The other thing is that we've only used a hundred percent of the plantings are native material. The. If you look at the bank parking areas, the one on Maple Hill Street. And then the one backing up to the medical building. Those are all heavily planted. There is some lawn area. In the front of the building, the reason that this lawn area and also. The area in the second bank area by the building where there's some juniper is very low, so that there's some areas to push snow. Otherwise, if it was all heavily planted, it there would be nowhere on the site to. Plow snow and stockpile it without using up parking spaces. The. The north end, which abuts the post office, is planted pretty heavily. There's nothing. There's no windows on that post office side. However. We felt that it should be screened so that we don't look at the the that kind of no man's land between this property line and the post office. And the maintenance on the post office side is not. Is is not very aesthetic. The on the opposite side for the. Where it joins the medical buildings, we're providing as much screening as possible. So that when the parking, the parking lot from the medical building has some screening into our parcel. The streetscape is pretty heavily planted. Again, all native material. There's a short wall. That comes from the truck access area. And that's screened. And then the street trees that are consistent with whatever else is on Maple Hill Street. The sizes of the trees are substantial. Three and a half to four inch caliber trees, and the size of the plantings are pretty substantial. So whatever green space is left on this site. Will be heavily planted. It probably will be the greenest spot, definitely on Maple Hill. But probably in the entire downtown area once it's completed. If there's any questions.
Frank, are you involved in the rooftop?
Yes. The rooftop, the rooftop, the rooftop is going to be. You know, green roofs in this area of the country are. The only feasible plant are sedums. And there are companies on Long Island who grow the sedums specifically for our northeast climate. And they come in actual. On pallets. And once the soil is put down, which is only four to six inches of. Of a light packed soil, these mats will be delivered. And basically, the day it's installed, it's done. And it needs to be irrigated. The good thing about the sedums are that they do stay succulent, meaning they have moisture in them all year. So that there's no chance of. A fire. The plants won't be dried out like a a normal planting in a wetland. The sedums have proved in this climate to be the most adaptable. And long-lived. We have CD cedar roofs that go back in the town of. Scarsdale that go back six years and there's no issues with them at all.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Is that okay, Rich? Frank, what is the species that you're using for screening on the north side? That looks as though it's sort of pink colored.
Okay, Joe, could you highlight the plant list? Are you able to enlarge that? Yep. It's. They are Viburnum dentatum, which is a native Viburnum, but the Chicago luster is a very upright variety of it. So they're not evergreen. But remember, that's also in the wetland planter. So it's a Viburnum that will take the wet conditions. It gets very thick and a lot of basil growth. It's not a tree. They're very heavily. They're shrubs that will grow up to six to eight feet tall. And the Chicago luster is upright and a very shiny green leaf. In a mild winter like we just had, it will remain evergreen. In a normal winter, they'll lose their leaves in November and regain them again by this term of the year.
Okay, so it will appear to be hedge like and can be maintained as a hedge more or less?
That's exactly it. Yeah.
Okay. Secondly. In the front. Of the building, the plantings there, except for the plants that are in front of the wall. Those are actually, most of that stuff is behind the wall, right on.
Yes.
And up elevated three or four feet or whatever it is, correct?
That's right.
Actually, not not quite, John. It's a little less than three or four. As you get towards this end of this.
It's a little higher.
It's a little higher. And so you're almost at you're at grade level.
So I assume that between the wall and the edge of the sidewalk as shown is is lawn or grass?
Yes.
Okay, I'm suggesting that we think about moving the sidewalk in and creating a. A buffer strip, you know, a planting strip that could, and we can do some street trees. And then keep it a little bit for snow storage. So this way you can clean clear up the sidewalk a little bit easier during heavy snows. And then my last question for you, Frank, is. On the south side above the wall where there you're actually building parking, what is the treatment there? I know it's very close to the property line. But what is going to happen in there?
Joe, you want to.
Yeah, right in there.
There's nothing there because of the wall comes almost right up to the property line.
Right, but you you're going to do something with it after construction of the wall.
Oh, well, it'll be graded and seeded.
Okay, it'll be seeded then, right?
Because their parking lot comes almost right up to the property line as well at the medical building.
It'll be seeded with grass?
With grass.
Okay, and so you'll have.
The reason is that right now, all their snow is piled right there, too. So anything we do plant, if we did, we've got, Joe, how much room do we have between the wall and the property line there?
About maybe eighteen inches to a foot.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So. You'll have how that's going to be maintained on your maintenance plan, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll have a maintenance plan that goes along with this as.
Okay. And then I have a question for Steve, which is on this southern wetland that you're improving.
Yes.
So you said you're going to lower it a little bit. I want to be clear. You're lowering the water level to a certain extent?
We're lowering the lower level, John, and as as part, yes. Right, right. By reopening that swell, we'll be lowering the water level a little bit. At the same time, when we pull the root masses out. For the frags, because once we cut the frags, you know, if you leave the roots in there in a situation like this, it's just going to grow back. So the proposal is to probably go in there with a small machine. And take the the root clumps out, and by pulling those out, that'll also. Lower it six to six inches to a foot by by just getting those roots out.
So you'll you'll lower the water level, but you'll also deepen it?
Deepen it a little bit, yeah.
Is that clear? Okay.
Yes.
So what you're doing will actually improve the function of the wetland, correct?
That's the plan. Yes, exactly.
Okay, all right. That's all I had on that. And then just one other comment point, actually, for Joe is. On the lighting plan, I think the wall packs. The specified wall pack there is probably not supported by the by the lighting code. And it looks as though it does have a. Horizontal throw to a certain extent, and that should probably be fully shielded. That that looks like the standard security light.
Okay.
So maybe.
We'll address that.
Yeah, in particular, since you have some poles around it, I'm not sure you need to throw a light all over the place.
Yeah, I mean, this is more, as I said. Around the the sides and back of the building.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. So we'll move on to to Gene. So Gene, you you need to. Share your screen.
Joe, I will, but can you put your site plan back up for a minute? I just want to discuss the the entry portico and also where we're going to locate the the emergency generator. So again, Joe, if you can point out. I don't know if you could see my mouse on there, where the so the entry portico is going to extend. Into the setback window. So we're going to request a zoning variance for. That canopy. We mentioned that at the. Working meeting for planning last month and also at Ibaka. And then also, Joe, if you can show where the emergency generator is going to be behind the. Trash container, lower. Southeast corner, southeast, keep going that right back in there. Right, and we're going to provide proper screening around that. Those were two issues that we mentioned at Ibaka and also. At the. Planning work meeting. I don't have those on my drawings. I just wanted to bring them up while you were there. I'll bring my screen up now, Joe. Thank you.
I have to stop sharing. Okay, there you go.
Hi, Joe.
Let me see if I can figure this out. I'm a bit of a dinosaur here, so you have to bear with me. Can anyone see that? Yes? Not yet?
No.
All right, hold on, let me figure. My daughter just coming in. Let me have her come. Alex, I want to bring up my. I want to bring up my. PDF.
Okay, it's coming up now.
It's on it now? Okay. All right, you have it now?
Yep.
Thank goodness for daughter number three. Thank you. My name is Gene Vitrano. I am with Sal Mancini Architect and Gary Spolatro Architect. We have, as I said, appeared before the. Planning Board at a workshop and also Ibaka at a workshop. I will go over the five architectural sheets, and then I have a rendering that we did not have available at those meetings. Again, as Joe mentioned, the building is one hundred and eight by ninety, the lower level. Which I will zoom in on will be warehouse space. Will have a. Entry stair, elevator shaft. Storage for. Records. Payroll and so on. In the front right corner of the building, somewhere in the back. Not sure location yet, we'll have a break room toilet for the warehouse man. And at the loading dock, separate exit for the. Warehouseman and then also a small office with a window viewing out where the trucks will be backing in and out of that space. That has not changed from our last appearance. The roof plan has. Remained the same except for the fact. And I'll show you when we get to the second floor plan, then now we have a large section of that space that's going to be the green roof. We'll also have. Mechanically equipment stored up there, and then based on recommendations from John and Ibaka. This wall now will actually be a faux gambrel roof. And once I have the size of the mechanical equipment, if we have to add additional screening, we will along the top of that gambrel roof. Let me go to the next drawing. Okay. Start with the second floor again, second. Start with the second floor, again, second floor plan. These are the stairs, uh, second means of egress from the second floor that will go down to the first floor. There'll also be a, a hallway that will allow the owner to access this back flat roof. We proposed to put a patio up there with some screening. This will be the green roof and then mechanical will be at the, uh, south end of the, uh, second floor. As Joe mentioned, we have no tenants in mind for the second floor yet, so we're just going to, we'll build it out as a white box. Uh, we have the elevator stairs and we'll designate the entire south section of that second floor for office, break room and, uh, necessary toilets. Then we just developed a range pole here to make sure that we didn't exceed the, uh, uh, recommended, uh, height of the building. All right, first floor, let me, uh, let me move this. Whoop, apologize. All right, first floor again, this is our portico or covered canopy in the front, uh, with the, uh, roof that extends across the entire front of the building to protect any, uh, uh, grills, barbecue, any summer appliances that may be displayed out there. Uh, we recessed the entry. We have two areas in the front that we're going to display kitchens, one on the right, one on the left, and they'll both be, uh, completely visible from the, under that, uh, front canopy. We've established a separate entrance to the second floor. Again, elevator, elevator also goes to the basement beside second floor. The staff for Atlantic Appliance will have access in the back of that elevator so that they're the only ones that can get downstairs to the warehouse. It'll be locked out for anyone, uh, entering from the, uh, second floor lobby. Stairs to the second floor and then again stairs down from, uh, Atlantic Appliance. We haven't established the layout yet of displays. We will do that once I have an opportunity to meet with, uh, Mr. Vukai and his, uh, suppliers and then we'll establish how we're going to display. And again, the entire floor will be, uh, for retail display. Let me blow it up a little bit and then I'll walk you through the office space. So again, everything remains at the south, uh, portion of that, that floor. We'll have a service and parts section just next to its service parts checkout, employee break room, they'll have a small, uh, Dwyer unit kitchenette, ADA unisex, uh, restroom. Our keeper, general manager will have her own space. Uh, this will be the administrative staff, which I had called the sister's office. Uh, there's also a storage and storage. We'll have, uh, custodial and cleaning supply cabinet accessible from the, uh, retail space. Provide two ADA unisex, uh, restrooms, drinking fountain, slop sink. And then off of the administrative offices, now I apologize, let me go back. We will have a break room with a kitchenette, a changing room, they'll have a private toilet, storage, and then the owner's office, again, private office with, uh, his own toilet. Let me go back now. All right, front elevation. And I do have a perspective, so I didn't do this in color. We modified the signage a little bit. In speaking with the owner and his, his, his daughters, they thought perhaps if we had block letters that stood out and were pinned to the building, it may be a better effect. So what we did, I reached out to Tim at Signs Inc. He's presently working on three variations of signage for us. Once I have that, I understand I have to go back before Abaca and do a separate, uh, sign submission. So once we have that, uh, then again, I'll give it to this board also. Uh, so again, Atlantic Appliance, if we do pinned letters, would look something like that. And then what I did is I went back to the original sign that I presented to planning. And just so that Tim at Signs Inc. had a better feeling for what we were looking for, we were going to put logo with the Vukai building beneath it. I gave him all the dimensions. This is the logo that will be in this placard. And if that's the direction we go, that will be up here at this gable end. Uh, if we go with the pinned letters, we'll move the Vukai building down at the portico canopy and then we'll just leave the logo of Atlantic Appliance, which is the two blue triangles at the two gables, at the gable of the portico. On the south elevation, and again, when we get to the, uh, sorry, when we get to the rendering, here's the south elevation, uh, these windows are all the offices that exist in the south portion of the, uh, main floor. These are the proposed windows for the second floor. And again, the logo up at the upper, uh, upper gable roof. Based on a suggestion of Abaca, we widened the space to create a little bit, uh, of a, a break in rather than having all horizontal siding the same color from the front to the back. They suggested we put in a banding to tie in the blue with the gray. So this is a, uh, fascia along the entire south side of the building. Uh, they also suggested that we try to create a, uh, a return hip roof at this end here and here. And after we played around with it, we just really weren't comfortable with it, so we left it at, uh, just a gable. And again, I think when you see the, the rendering, you'll appreciate, uh, appreciate what it looks like. But they also suggested that we widen the columns, which we did. So we widened all the columns. We took the pediments up and then you'll see in the rendering, we continue that lineup underneath the eaves of the gable roof. Uh, we also are going to match the stone base wall will be the same stone that we're using for the landscaping walls. Uh, and, uh, it was discussed and suggested at the Abaca meeting that that's going to be a, uh, cut granite in the gray family. So once we've established that and, uh, picked out that material, again, we'll present that back to the board. Uh, with that, also, John suggested that we put together a proposed north elevation facing the post office. We didn't have that initially and to put some windows on there to break it up. I'd like to explain how the windows ended up at this configuration. Uh, these windows on the second floor match the windows on the south elevation. There is a fourth window here. If we put this fourth window here, this fits right in line with the demising wall between the second means of egress from that second floor and the second floor white box. So we left it out. Uh, John also suggested that we put in some clear story windows. Uh, we put in a series of four, not knowing exact location yet, because I think this is going to be dependent upon how we display the, uh, uh, the appliances inside the showroom. Because again, we'll have some kitchenette, kitchens actually laid out and then based on their layout, we may slide these, uh, you know, back and forth a bit. This door is the, uh, second means of egress from the, the main floor. Uh, I cannot go towards the front of the property because what happens is the driveway is too close to the building for me to allow for an ample width for the set of stairs. So we elected to let that stairs run towards the back of the property. And then we just developed a rear elevation. Uh, again, this is the entire back of the showroom or main floor. The only window right now is in the owner's office. Uh, these are windows that we proposed for the second floor. And again, this is the, uh, the, uh, faux, uh, gambrel roof. As I said, once we establish the height of the mechanical equipment, if we have to go up higher, we will. Right now it's five feet above the, uh, finish elevation. This is the loading dock and again, you can see as Joe laid out, the truck will back down so that the bed of that tractor, I apologize, the trailer, will be level with the loading dock. This is the door exit for the warehouse man and that's the window in his office. Uh, now, I don't want that one. I want this one. All right. This... Let me see if I can get this. All right, so this is the proposed street elevation. Portico with the logo, again logos. This particular rendering shows the signage as we had it before we discussed with, uh, Mr. Vukai and his staff, the possibility of pinning the letters up there. So if that were the case, this is out. The Vukai building signage will go here. This logo will be smaller and then obviously, whoever the tenant or tenants are on the second floor, their signage will be here. Uh, again, we beefed up all the columns, we carried the lineup. Uh, initially, and I'll go back to the first rendering. Uh, that's not it. Initially, the rendering, we had the stone wall up high and it was just too intrusive. So what we did is we went back, we revisited and we determined to lower that wall. I think, Joe, did you say it was going to be a 22 inches above grade?
The, the wall's going to be 12 inches above grade.
12 inches, all right. All right, so this wall will be 12 inches and the stone will match, right, the stone wall in the front, our base, and the stone wall will all be the, uh, the cut granite. Right now we're looking at the blue and white. Again, uh, when we went to Abaca, they suggested that, or blue and light gray. They suggested that rather than having this all light gray, that we break this up. So we created with vertical lines, uh, a blue section in the center under that gable roof and then the rest of it will be gray. The bottom is going to be, uh, stuccoed. Uh, I'm assuming we'll let that be a gray similar to the, uh, the horizontal siding. The materials we're working with right now, uh, we're proposing a horizontal hardy board with a seven inch exposure. Uh, all the trim will be in AZAC. We'll, uh, use AZAC on the columns, the corner boards, uh, the freeze boards. Uh, the slate roof we're proposing, right now we're looking at DaVinci Roofscape, which is a composite roofing material and we're proposing that to be a slate, a slate gray. Uh, that's about it. If you have any questions, I'm open to them.
Thank you. What else you got, Joe?
Okay. Gene, could you unshare?
Say that again, Joe?
Just do a stop share.
Stop share, okay, so let me see how to stop share. Stop share, okay.
Bravo.
I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm a dinosaur in it. I have to call my daughter to come running back down.
Uh, yeah, so just a couple of things, uh, Gene, Gene hit on the need for variance. Uh, so the, the, um, front of the building comes out beyond the setback line, so we're going to need a 10-foot variance for, for basically from this point on, the, uh, portico's, you know, the closest point, so we're going to need a variance for that. Um, we're also going to need, uh, a special use permit uh, for exterior displays. We're going to use this area in front of the building for, you know, occasional displays, mostly in the grill weather. So there'll probably be grills out there and, and whatnot. That'll be brought out in the morning and, uh, returned at night. So, um, with that said, the only thing that we, we feel we haven't addressed yet and we, um, we have to take care of, uh, which if you so choose to close the public hearing, we don't think, uh, would affect you doing that, is, um, is the, uh, SHIPO requested to do a Phase A archaeological study, which, um, uh, we're hoping and anticipating that it's not going to be, uh, it's not going to yield anything of concern.
John, I would ask you, how do we, uh, how do we handle that?
The phase one?
Yes.
That should be done probably before you're done here.
All right, so we should, no matter what, keep it open?
I would say.
Okay. Does the sofa fall into that category of? I'm surprised Frank Giuliani didn't replant it.
That's circa Archie Bonker.
Yeah, it looked like it.
Uh, just one other thing, Joe, these, I think it's probably wise to, uh, apply for the zoning variance as soon as possible, right?
Yes, I, I'm not sure how they're operating or if they're operating. Um, I don't know if you know?
Well, they, they will be at some point soon, sooner than later.
Okay. So, so if the, you know, if the, if the planning board is, um, okay with, with our going for the variance, then we would, we would surely like to get a letter of endorsement from you to the zoning board.
I, I think we talked about that at the last meeting we had. Any objections from the board?
No, none here.
All right, done with your presentation. Go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry.
Just one last minor thing, uh, in the rendering, uh, on the lowered retaining wall that's close to the building, it shows a fence. Is, is that the fence that you'll be using and can you put the detail on your set?
There's a, there's a guardrail there actually, Joe said last time.
Yeah, there's actually...
Because there's a drop behind it.
There's actually, what, the renderer didn't pick up, John? There's a guardrail there?
Yeah.
In front of the railing? So we will be using, yes, that's the railing we, we're going to be using. We will add a detail, uh, to the plan for that.
And you'll have a guardrail in front?
And there'll be a go, a timber guardrail in front there.
Okay.
So, and there, there's also a timber guardrail at the end of the, um, the access aisle here as well as, um, in this area facing Maple Hill. And it's, you know, it's all timber guardrail, but, but everywhere where we have an elevation difference, so this, this railing is going to wrap all the way around this section, the parking lot, all the way to the end of the building here. And, um, it, here it's just going to run this stretch here.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Joe and team.
Thank you.
Any members of the planning board have any concerns, questions?
None here.
Nope.
All right, John, I know we spoke, anything else?
No, I don't have anything else at present.
Thomas, everything duly, uh, noticed?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Jim, any issues?
No issues from me.
Robin? Ready to go to the public?
Yes.
All right, so do we have any comments, concerns or questions from the public for the applicant?
I'll invite, um, Susan Siegel would like to speak.
Welcome, Susan.
Yes, hello there, okay.
Thank you, I hope you're well.
Okay, yes, I am and I hope you're all well. Uh, just to clarify, I, judging by what I've heard and seen, the members of the planning board present are you, Rich, Bill Escola and John Kincard, is that correct?
And John Savoka and Rob Garrigan were here also.
Yeah. The one that's not here is Aaron Fox.
Okay. I couldn't, couldn't see this, this is all very new to me and I'm not very technical, as Robin knows.
Welcome aboard.
Okay, um, let me just make it clear that I'm speaking as a resident and not as a member of, of any group. All right? Um, in general, I, I support the application and I believe that this new home for Atlantic Appliance will be a very welcome addition to the Yorktown Heights, um, business pamphlet. Um, I've been a customer of Atlantic for more years than I'd like to think of that. Um, but I do have some concerns about whether the plan, as it was presented in the, in a very, very thorough presentation, conforms to the town's tree law and the law is very specific and very clear requirements for a tree permit. As some of you know, I've been involved with the, the tree permit issue for, um, basically since 2010. Specifically, the tree law requires the applicant to submit a tree mitigation plan that addresses and compensates for the impact of the removal of protected trees and also, and this is critical, the removal or disturbance of protected woodlands. The mitigation re, plan requirement is a shall, not a may. Mitigation is not optional, it is required. The law also clearly, very clearly requires that the mitigation plan shall, again, shall, not may, be submitted to both the conservation board and the tree commission for their review and comment. Um, I heard you say, uh, Rich, that there was a memo from the tree conservation board and, uh, I think it might be helpful if that can be read out at, at, as part of this hearing so that its comments can be shared by, by other people. Um, like wetland, like wetland, excuse me?
I, I said we could do that or probably have Thomas do it.
Okay, uh, yeah, I, it, it's probably very- Okay, yeah, I, it's probably very short. Like wetlands, trees and woodlands, as, as I'm sure you know, provide multiple functions and benefits to the town. That's why when trees and/or woodlands have to be removed or disturbed to make way for development, the loss of those functions needs to be mitigated. The key word is the functions that these trees and woodlands provide. We've done this for decades with wetlands, but since 2012, the town has recognized the need for mitigation when trees and woodlands are removed or disturbed. But there's no record that there's a separate and district distinct tree mitigation plan has ever been prepared as part of the Atlantic Appliance Development Plan for either tree removal or woodlands removal or disturbance. In all the planning board sessions leading up to this hearing, I don't recall any discussion about the extent to which a protected woodland would be removed or disturbed. The applicant has submitted a landscape plan that's been very carefully reviewed today that identifies some new plantings, both trees and shrubs. But as the planning board knows, a landscape plan is not a mitigation plan and a landscape plan isn't a substitute for a tree mitigation plan that addresses the lost functions of removed trees and disturbed woodlands. Again, if I repeat the word "lost functions" many times, it's because that's the critical essence of the tree law. Mr. Marino did an excellent job of describing the wetlands mitigation plan, but it really wasn't clear that that was a substitute for a separate and distinct tree mitigation plan. Again, that deals with the functions not of the wetlands, but of the trees and the woodlands. Also, the stormwater plan doesn't address all the lost functions that we, that we need to talk about. The mitigation section of the tree law is very flexible and it gives the planning board the ability to work with the applicant to develop a very reasonable and a meaningful and cost-effective mitigation plan that is very custom tailored to the site. And the mitigation plan isn't just the replanting of a fixed number of trees. The plan, as the board knows, can be a combination of measures, some of which don't necessarily involve replanting. And the plan could also, those measures could be onsite, but they could also be offsite.
Susan?
Yeah, I just have a few more comments.
Not to cut, not to cut you off, we, we, we're aware of the tree law. I don't think we, we want to go through the whole purpose of the tree law right now. But to your point, and we'll have Thomas read it in, the TCAC did issue a letter. Unfortunately, the applicant hasn't had the, the chance to take a look at it yet. So what I would say is, hold tight, as this is why these things get, you know, sent out to the various boards. And we look forward to the, the team for Atlantic Appliance to come up with those plans, as you stated. So we appreciate your comments, not to cut you off, but we don't need to go into the, I think the, with all due respect, the history of the, the law and it will get addressed.
Okay, well, I'm glad, I'm glad that you-
Do you want to talk to that real quick? Have you seen-
No, but I'm glad that you, you recognize that, that before you issue a tree permit, it needs a mitigation plan and that, that mitig-
That's why we stick this to the board, Susan.
Okay, and so just-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if, if you just adjourn the hearing and let them-
We're going to make that decision as a board.
Alright, because-
I appreciate your input, though.
The town worked for more than two years, you know, on this, on this, you're a part of it, Rich.
I, listen, I appreciate what you're saying, but we don't need to get into that here. We understand, that's why we forward it off to these other agencies, that's why they take a look at it. We've got the memo back, we will address it and I appreciate your input, thank you. You have anything?
Okay, and just, just one, one other thing. Was the application back in, I think in December, when the application first came in, that also should have been referred to the Tree Commission and wasn't?
I believe it was, we'll double check that.
Yeah, I appreciate that because I think there have been some other applications currently before the board that I am concerned about, that they're not being properly referred out to the Tree Commission.
We will certainly make sure that's done if it hasn't.
Okay, thank you, thank you so very much. And thank you, Steve and Joe, for a very good presentation.
Yeah, well done, gentlemen.
Very good, very good.
Alright, so if there's nothing else from the board, anybody else from the public? Robin, do we see anything?
I do not.
Alright, I'm going to make the motion to adjourn the public hearing until we cross some Ts and dot some Is. Any objections?
Why are we adjourning it, why can't we close it?
Because there's too many details that haven't been addressed yet.
Especially that historical-
Yes, that, that's the state, we can't, we can't just, that's got to be something that's got to be addressed.
But we can move it along, Bill, because we're having meetings every week now, so.
Yeah. And I have to say personally, I like the application, I think it was very well presented.
Excuse me, I sent in a question to Robin?
Yes, Mark just sent me a message.
Mark?
Lieberman.
Okay.
He would like to know, how can you change a wetland and still call it a wetland?
I would leave that to Steve.
I guess, I guess we're probably talking about the wetland along on Veterans then, that South Wetland. Well, I mean, a wetland is an area that's wet, that has a certain type of soil and has certain kind of vegetation growing out of it. Our proposal is to maintain the wetness, which is what drives everything else, but clean out the nuisance vegetation and invasive vegetation that's growing there and replace it with native vegetation that will provide a better function as a wetland in, in, in our kind of ecosystem here. If we leave it the way it is, animals don't use it. The vegetation is a monoculture of one species, which is a nuisance and gets into everything. The fact that this area has become flooded has already killed the, the trees that were growing in there previously. So our plan is to modify it, not to replace it, it's to modify what's there and, and, and enhance it in a way that makes for a better wetland.
Joe, Steve, you're actually expanding the wetland, are you not?
And we are expanding the wetland by about 50%, yes.
And I think what's important about this application is the benefit that work in that wetland is going to have towards that area that we've heard about with other applications.
Correct.
Yes, if you recall, we had that application on Greenwood Street. A lot of the public concern was regarding flooding from the brook on their side of the street and how would that property affect the flooding. So we're sure the same questions exist here and we have a kind of a two-pronged approach to try to, to help with that condition.
What, what's nice about your presentation, Steve, is you go back to the county site and get those old aerials, which really tells a tale there, especially with the history.
Sure, it does, yeah.
We appreciate that.
There we are, let's look at that top photo.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
Amazing.
Mr. Lieberman, did that answer your question?
It's not my expertise, it's just a curiosity. Because everything I heard in the past during the wetlands hearings was it takes decades to form a wetlands and changing a wetlands, it's no longer a wetlands. It's, it's a man-made project.
And I've been working on projects similar to this, an expansion and restoration of existing wetlands for many years, over 20 years now. And, and I can tell you that, as long as you have the right base conditions, and we know this area is wet, we know that the soils are organic and hold a certain amount of nutrients in the soil. As long as we can maintain those conditions and revise the, the plant community there, we can, we can certainly make an existing wetland better. And in this particular case, we're not trying to take an area that isn't wetland and making it wetland. That's a little bit more of a complicated process. Here we have an area that's already wetland and we just want to clean it out and improve it.
And change the furniture.
And change-
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Thanks, Mark.
Alright, we missing anything? So the hearing is adjourned, can I have a motion? There's a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Frank, good seeing you.
Thank you, hope to see you soon.
I hope so, too.
And a real live meeting.
Good night.
That'd be nice.
Alright, we have one more public hearing. This is the Nestle Waters, but before we get to the public hearing, we have to talk about waiving the public informational hearing for this. I think what we discussed at the last meeting is, due to the nature of what's going on here, that the public hearing itself would, would cut it. So if there's no objection from the board, do I have first a motion to waive the public informational hearing for the Nestle Waters?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did that cover that, Robin?
Yes.
Alright, then I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing for Nestle Waters located at 3775 Crompton Road. I have a motion.
No motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Joe, you're on.
Okay. I'm going to share, Robin.
Go ahead.
Joe, just for a point of interest, too, we, we got, oh, I forgot to read that tree mile one's the last application. We got two emails from residents, oh, about the, about the project. Have you seen those?
No.
Thomas, is there any way to get those to Joe?
I just forwarded them to him.
Thank you, Robin. And I apologize, Susan, I, I was going to read that memo in and we'll have to get that out there. Alright, Joe.
Do I need to look at these emails right now, Robin?
Well, Mr. Campolo is here with us tonight, he was the author of one of them, correct, Mr. Campolo?
That is correct.
Yeah. So.
Oh, there he is.
Good evening all.
How are you, sir?
Alright, should I express my concerns?
No, wait, we're going to let the applicant do their presentation, just like the other applications and then we'll ask if there's any input from the public and then we'll talk to you.
Okay, I will.
Just hold tight, thank you. We appreciate you being here.
Pleasure.
Alright, Joe.
Okay. Good evening, Joe Sefrina, the Principal Site Design Consultant and Project Engineer for Nestle's Waters North America. The proposed project here is reoccupying of a site that, that has been vacant for several years. Historically, the site was the location of the Verizon or prior to that Bell Telephone Line Crew headquarters and they did all their pole repair and transformer repair, wirework out of this facility for the region. The, so as you can see from this photo, this is what the site looked like when Verizon was occupying the site. Site's located on, on the south side of Crompton Road, almost at the Lexington border. This is Garden Lane coming out here. This is a Requa Road, which is a paper road that goes out behind the property. And this is the town of Yorktown here and the county bus garage is across and on its way over there. Next door to it is the little cabin and, and the medical building after, after that. Okay. So, as I said, the proposed project is, proposed property is this site here. It's 1.9 acres, it's zone C4 commercial. Nestle's is a leasing, they are not the owners of the property. You're entering into a long-term lease to use the property for the distribution of bottled water. The current zoning is consistent with the proposed use of the property. The, the north side of the property is bound by 202. As you get behind, as I said, Requa Road is a paper road that goes out to 202. That's a wet area, there's, there's a water course that runs basically across and parallel to the property and comes across and heads its way and goes under 202 into the wetland, which is across the street, that's a state wetland there. The area behind the property, you can see there's about 200 feet of woodland vegetation. And then on the, beyond that, on Old Crompton Road, you have a residential neighborhood where you have a mix of residences and some residences that are being used as commercial properties. At the edge of the woodline, woodline here, which is elevated above the property, so this is, this is fairly flat in here and then basically in this area here, you've got a, a rise that goes from moderate to steep. In some areas, it's not even navigable by foot. And then you've got the rear yards of the properties in here. So the site as it exists today, there's the existing building here, which is approximately 25,000 square feet. The majority of the site, other than this portion in front of the building, is covered with asphalt pavement and has been. The applicant has, in, in the last several months, repaved the portion of it, this portion here, as well as did some work to the existing fences. They replaced the chain link fence along the front of the property with new fencing, I'm sorry, from here to here, as well as installed some rolling, rolling gates that they're going to use for security and they added a gate back in this portion here, again, to secure the site. This portion of the site is still open and it's still an open lawn area. There's drainage on the property that exists. For the most part, we've managed to clean out and video most of the pipes that are underground. They eventually discharge across to Route 202, across Route 202, to the state wetland. Some of the lines were clogged, we needed to jet them clean. There's an existing oil-water separator on the property, which is located right here, that picks up all of the floor drains inside the building. There is a pump, a small pump station here. This building right into the low-pressure sewer main, the town low-pressure sewer main, which runs right across the front of the property and it's connected to town water. There's an existing loading dock on the back of the building, which is destined to come down. Entire site is in an A-zone as determined by FEMA. The proposed building will be, not the proposed, but the existing building will be fitted with floodgates at all the openings, which are removable and could be installed at the prediction of any type of flooding. From what we've been able to find out, there's never been a history of the site being flooded. So, as I said, the, the project, the, the property is, is being adapted to distribute water. The building will be retrofitted with interior loading docks, which are located in this back right corner here. The existing loading dock, which I pointed out, which is here, is, as I said, is to come down. Trucks will enter the site from this location here and back their way into the loading docks. These are the source trucks for the water. They deliver water to the site between 8:00 and 2:00 AM. Once they're parked, the staff inside the building, typically it's four individuals, will unload the trucks for movement of the water into, onto the, the service, the delivery trucks, which are, are parked out in this area here. Which I'll, I'll get to that operation in shortly. So as these trucks- So as these trucks leave the site, they're going to make their way around the building and out this security gate here. There'll be at all the gates, there will be a FOB sensor to open the gates when an employee or a truck is entering or leaving the site. All vehicles leaving the site will be mandated to make a right-hand turn out only. There'll be no left-hand turns allowed out of the site. so as I as I mentioned, you have the route trucks, which will all be parked here. And essentially, the way the operation is going to work is at 6:00 a.m. in the morning, half of the route drivers will arrive at the site. Right? So that's these gold-colored spaces here. They will arrive at the site and they will park using these existing parking spaces here. Typically, you'll have, as I said, you'll have four individuals inside the building doing the loading, I'm sorry, the unloading and loading. And you'll have one or two managerial persons in the building at this also, making sure that everything is running smoothly and everyone has their route instructions. So these individuals arrive at 6:00 a.m. They make their way into the building. They have a separate gate here, which is only going to be hold on a second, let me just. So this gate is strictly going to be for vehicle traffic, automobile traffic only. There are onsite safety protocols, which are very strict and required to be adhered to. Nestle does, under all, under any circumstance, wants to avoid mixing the commercial traffic with the automobile traffic. So this area in here is going to be dedicated to the automobiles. Again, this will be gated and they'll have a FOB entry. Okay. So once these individuals arrive, they will walk, there's a designated walkway that takes them into the building. They pick up their route instructions and they're ready to go. Meanwhile, during the evening hours, after while these, well, late, early morning hours, while these trucks were being unloaded, two of the delivery trucks are back into the building. They're loaded and put back in into position and parked. This goes on all night until all these trucks are full and ready to go. So now these drivers pick up their instructions, get in their trucks, these trucks here, exit the site and make a right turn only out of the site and get on their way to to their delivery routes. Those trucks will be off the site by 6:30. As those trucks are leaving, the next shift comes in, the other half of the route drivers. So they'll come in. They'll park in these empty spots here where the route trucks that have already left or whatever spaces are available in this area here. Same routine, these these drivers will enter the building, pick up their route instructions. Their trucks are already loaded and ready to go. They will exit the site, exit right only. They'll be off the site by 7:30. They'll return in the middle of the afternoon, park their trucks, back them into their spots as shown here. And then that same routine will happen every night of the week, except for the weekend. As far as as far as other improvements expected to be made here as part of this application, it's been a lot of discussion with the planning board about the aesthetics of the chain link fence along the front here. The applicant has agreed to replace that with a picket-style fence, which will look something like this. It'll be eight foot high to match the the existing fence. However, the rolling gates will still remain in place and all will be chain linked. In addition to that, there'll be some low plantings along the front of that area. Those plants will generally be kept at 30 or 36 inches high. The plants selected are hardy plants and they're tolerant to to road salt, so they should survive, easily survive in this in this area here. there's existing lighting on the site, which for the most part, we're abandoning. And we're putting in some new lighting up. There'll be two new poles installed, one here and one here. Those lights will be directed inward and downward as as agreed to avoid shedding too much light towards the back. We've got enough light in here to provide safety for the workers to get around and for trucks to maneuver around the site without any mishaps. There'll be one, two, and two wall packs here. Again, as discussed, those will be pointed downward to avoid any glare leaving the site. We've provided cut sheets and details of that of that lighting. This is the truck turning movement diagram. This is how the trucks will be entering the site and backing in to each of their respective loading docks. You can show these are 53-foot trailers, so they're they're big trucks. And there's no no issue with them being able to make the maneuvers they need to to get into the into into the loading docks. This shows a truck making a left out. This is never updated since we've agreed to to making that right-hand turn out, but we'll get that we'll get that taken care of. But we certainly have agreed to that and we are going to stick with that. I think we've also, we've even added some signage. We've added some signage here, which indicates that there'll be no left turnout, that it's right turnout only. This is the signage for the building. As you can see, it's got the Ready Fresh Nestle logo. That's going to go on the front of the building face facing 202, which is this elevation here. And it's going to go somewhere right on the, you know, right in the midpoint of the roof parapet. One of the other modifications that's being made is the front elevation or Route 202 elevation, the windows are being replaced to something more aesthetically pleasing, rather than that that industrial warehouse type look, which exists in the other parts of the building. So lastly, we were asked to provide some additional information. We were asked to provide Phase 1 study. So the fortunately, the property owner had one done in 2016, which is fairly recent. We've supplied that. And in summary, that showed that there are no environmental concerns on the site. As I said, we we've cleaned out, completed the cleaning out of the stone water lines and we'll be able to provide a report on that also. The other point of discussion was the noise factor. And the board asked for us to do a noise assessment of the trucks maneuvering on the site, especially during the early morning hours. So we brought in a consultant, Tony Russo from Environmental Compliance Services, Inc., who did this noise assessment. We submitted the report. And Tony's on to explain that. So I'm going to bring that up and I'll let Tony go. To his thing.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Just give me a second, Tony, so I can get the report up.
Can you see that?
Yep. We got it.
You got it? Okay.
Yeah, there's a figure. A figure 4-1, if we can go there. It's about the third one in.
Tony, you have to introduce yourself.
Yes, Tony Russo of Environmental Compliance Services Incorporated, Middletown, New York. We were asked to come in and do a noise assessment of residents, in particular, their nearest property lines and the residents themselves. That is residential properties we can gain access to. And we conducted a survey between the hours of 9:15, 12:30, midday. And what we did, and looking at this image, this this aerial, we utilized a single delivery route truck, backed it up on two routes. And you can see that up on the north side or the top side of the figure, you see the Nestle Waters facility building. There's backup beeper route one and beeper route two. What we, the concept was, is to establish noise assessment locations and measure sound pressure levels when the delivery route truck was backing up along those two routes. And and also obtain ambient sound levels. And the idea was to initially, for the first three noises locations, just locate those those points for assessment on nearest south prop boundary line of the facility, which is more or less the northwest corner of the residence of 3784. And these are residences that that are on Old Crompton Road. And NAL 2 was at the northeast corner of address 3780. And number three was up on the northwest side of 3756, pretty much a little west onto 3766. And this is on the tail end of developed portion of those properties. The idea for these three was to see what the noise levels were relative to increases over ambient. And we also, thanks to Tom and Gustino, were able to gain access to two residences, noise assessment location four and five. Four is pretty much set up between a midpoint closest to their property line, that that southbound facility property line for 3780 and 3784. And noise assessment location five is pretty much very near the back door, or at least the stairway leading to the back door of that residence. And as I said, we we initially set up NAL 1, 2, and 3 to to measure sound pressure levels when the backup beeper was activated along Route 1 and then Route 2. So we took 30 measurements at 10-second intervals, slow response, you know, type A meter, decimal meter. And we recorded those measurements for each of those locations. And then we had gone back and did ambient also. And ambient pretty much was what was in the immediate area of land use activities, including traffic along, primarily traffic along Crompton Road. And for noise assessment locations, four and five, we did the same thing. We measured ambient and we measured the the sound of the backup beep that's running across those routes. And what we what we learned was that and if we move along, just beyond page 6, Joe, there's a tabulation. One more, there you go. Okay. You see in this table, and I have some qualifications down in the notes, we have the different noise assessment locations across the top. And then vertically on the left is ambient background, backup beeper route 1, backup beeper route 2. So at noise assessment location 1, you can see that the ambient level is for backup beeper 1, Route 1 and Route 2. Now, keep in mind, these are level equivalents, which is a calculation that's recognized to by planning boards and pretty much regulatory agencies to measure sound levels, various sound levels over a period of time, which, when assessed, will give you a good idea as to whether or not you're going to get complaints for residence. And so that's highly recognized. So those were calculated. We included the calc sheets for those LEQs that were calculated. And looking at ambient, of course, those levels are low and across the board. And for beeper route 1, NAL 1, which is close to beeper route 1, and when you think about it, looking back on that image we were just looking at. And so that was high. Also, at NAL number 2 was 60.32, which was the max. And on and on. And as you get to noise assessment locations 4 and 5, you can see there's drops because they were further back, as you would imagine, they're further back. And so there's distance and a little bit something to do with elevation. And we noticed that also the existing building acts as a barrier at NAL 1, partially at 2. Three is kind of wide open. And the same, you know, goes for NAL 4 and 5, you know, there was a little bit of a a barrier at NAL 4, by the building, that is. And 5, it really wasn't a building. And so it's kind of straight out, you can see Crompton Road, and so you had some influence there by traffic noise, for the most part. And so looking at backup beeper route 2, as you go through, there were max, there was a max on that as well. And then, of course, they were less so for 4 and 5. And in particular, at NAL 5, we had a spike because a helicopter flew overhead. It was low-flying. So I basically took maximum for 30, 30-minute period. And through that 61.6, and it's noted in the notes, and I plugged that into the two points of recording to kind of get some kind of consistency, to bring it down. The actual level was 58.66 with the helicopter. Without the helicopter, it's 56.78. So it's just an effort to kind of bring this closer to reality, using the maximum, which was caused by a sizable truck on Crompton Road. And so, again, you can see some of the influences here and there. And it, it worked out pretty good. And, you know, looking at this table, you can see that the amount or the change or the delta, you know, the increase is, is noticeable in some cases. And in some other cases, it's not as noticeable. And what we did is we, we took this information and using the DEC's noise assessment, mitigating noise and, you know, monitoring noise, assessing your noise and so on and so forth, their policy program, guidance document, we were able to compare these levels and make some sort of evaluation as to whether or not we're looking at any impacts. And so, Joe, moving down to section six, if we get down to section six. And incidentally, there's a lot of write-up here on each of these results for the set, the assessment, that you might find interesting. And what I've done is, on this page nine, on the, under the subsector, the section of noise impact analysis, I included from the DEC manual, or rather, the guidance document, was a human reaction to increases in sound pressure level. You can see, you know, we have an increase or a change that's under five. It's, they claim human reaction is unnoticed or, or tolerable. Five to ten, it's intrusive and so on and so forth. Joe, if you scroll to seven, page seven. I also included something from OSHA to give you an idea of what sound levels, typical sound levels are with certain activities, you know, quiet room, forty decibel eight, so on and so forth. So basically, it's just to kind of give you another reference, you know, that being OSHA, as to what you can expect relative to, to sound pressure levels for different actions or activities. You know, keep in mind, when we were looking at noise assessment locations one, two, and three, I personally was looking to see how close we were getting to sixty two, sixty five decibels, because typically surrounding municipalities and ordinances that have thresholds for the nearest residential property of sixty two or sixty five decibels. And so, you know, back on, looking back on that table, we never exceeded, you know, the sixty two or the sixty five. As I said, we had two max levels that were sixty point something or other. And, you know, looking down the page, on, on page ten, you see the, the deltas for each of those three noise assessment locations. And thinking back on the, the page prior, you know, zero to five, you know, human reaction, zero to five, it's unnoticed or, or tolerable. And then five to ten, thank you, Joe, is, is in, and I can't see that, but let me blow it up on my side. It's in tol, it's intrusive, that's the word, I'm very sorry. And so, looking back on those deltas, we have values that are zero to five and also that are intrusive. But at no time did they exceed the sixty two, typical sixty two, sixty five decibel threshold level, which, for me personally, is, is a good indication. And Joe, moving down to the next page.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
If I can interrupt for one second?
Yes.
This is unbelievable information. If you're Mr. Campolo, up in his house at two o'clock in the morning on January twentieth, and they're backing trucks up, are you going to hear it?
That's hard to say, because I don't, I don't know where he is, if he's part of that group. There is a possibility, typically windows are closed, that's what they say in the guidance documents.
Right.
And, you know, we, we didn't measure sound levels at, you know, in the, in the morning.
Right.
What we tried to do is to put those, that truck right up against the line and have it be continuous. Now, you know, the trucks are not going to drive back and forth along the south property boundary. They're going to be more a little bit internal. And in the case of the tractor trailers, the maximum would be two trucks arriving over a period of time staggered. And so they leave and then two others will show up staggered. And, and then when the delivery route trucks are finished being loaded, they'll be backed up into those areas that Joe described. And so it's not a bunch of trucks, it's just one at a time, because they can't move more than one at a time after it's loaded. So it's hard to say. I mean, I, I, you know, it's, you know, average temperature, wind, you know, are variations. The positive thing about this is the distance, a little bit of the elevation, as I noted in my report. But also, you have that buffer or that vegetated area. That makes a difference.
Right.
When the leaves are out, sure, that, that'll help. But, you know, we did this when there were no leaves on the trees, as I said, and, you know, putting those trucks up against the south boundary line best we can. Again, that was between the hours, as I said, between the hours, roughly nine fifteen, nine thirty to twelve thirty-five, something thereabouts.
Nonsense. So in the middle of the night, when there's nothing else going on?
Right.
Are we going to hear?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep. Are we going to hear that beep? If we're in his house?
I would imagine you will, but to what extent, it's hard to say. It's not going to be, it's not going to be, you know, it's not going to be like what we're seeing at the property boundary.
Hang on, Mr. Campolo. All right, I'm sorry. George, if you could just hang on until he's done with his presentation.
Okay.
All right. Right. All right, I'm sorry.
That's, I'm sorry. The way to, to determine that is to, you know, do it during the evening, you know, during the, you know, ten to six AM, if you will.
Right.
You know, to get the sound levels that could be expected. Now, keep in mind, this is, you know, a land use, we're talking residential against commercial. And a good part of it is, a good part of it is, is traffic and certainly traffic is less so during that time.
Rich, you know, I, I want to say that I was out there for a good part of the study. And it was Tom, Tom, Tom was a real trooper. Anyway. And at, at the rear property line, where the edge of the wood line was, remember now, we were running trucks back and forth forty times constantly along the fence. And it, it was not, you can hear it, but it was in the background. It was not something that was like, you know, when you're at, standing at the truck hearing that beep. It was something more in the background, if I could, if I could phrase it that way.
I understand.
If I may also, am I on? If I may, if I may also, in a nutshell, to Joe's point, yes, there obviously is more traffic on Route two oh two, Crown Pond Road, where the trucks backing up will more for blend with that now. So it really is not much higher. In a nutshell, your windows are open, you, you may hear it. If your windows are closed, you definitely.
All right, so your opinion, Tom, your professional opinion is in the middle. Generally, in the, in the wintertime, your windows are not open.
Correct.
Unless you're my wife. And people are not going to hear the beeping from three hundred feet away.
No, they will not.
Okay. Joe, not to cut your presentation short, or Mr. Russo, brilliant information. Are we missing anything?
Tony, you, you, are you done?
Well, I just wanted to just reiterate that the, if you go up one, one page, Joe, to eleven. Okay, those are the noise assessment, those levels for four and five. You can see comparison to background is a negligible increase. I mean, I mean, that's what we're looking at based on distance. Now, again, we were only able to get on two properties. There are reasons for that. We had some obstacles, we had dogs barking that we had to take care of, thanks to Tom. And so, thank goodness, Tom was able to get us at least on two sites. So it worked out pretty good relative to that, you know, that, that situation or those situation. That's basically it.
Okay.
Oh, Rich.
Yes, sir.
Also joining us is Emilio Diaz. He's the regional warehouse and process and supply manager. You've met Emilio a few times, he's come to the meetings.
And he works in Albstred.
What's that?
He's the guy in Albstred, right?
Yep. Uh, no, he's, he, he's actually more, he's regional.
Okay.
And also Chris Orfisi's on, he is the, he's with Construction Associates. He's the project manager for the project. So I'd like to throw it out to them, just to see if they have anything else they want to add.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, I don't, thank you, everyone. No, Joe, I think, I think Tony and you covered it. I know one, one of our supervisors that would be based out of this location was also on site. He was responsible in the, the vehicle. And I, and he shared with us the same impression as you did.
Thank you, Emilio. Chris, do you want to say anything?
I got one clarification, Joe, can you hear me, does anybody hear me?
Yes.
Just identify yourself, Chris.
Chris, this is Chris, Construction Associate, some Nestle's National Project Manager. Just want to clarify, Joe, you had mentioned, you know, making it important for the planning board to, to understand, you mentioned fob reader on the trucks and the cars, but actually, most trucks and vehicles will be equipped with RFID, where the, the gate will actually start opening, you know, not going to be sitting in the road like waving a fob. It'll, it'll actually start opening as they approach, as they're waiting to make the turn in. So just a, something I think you might, something that they may wanted to understand that there wouldn't be trucks, you know, the gate would generally be opening before they pull in. One other point on the fence that, that we were actually trying to request it to stay with the team, I'm not sure how much the planning board understood about that. But there's a, just a security concern on that picket type, that it's just not as secure as the chain link and easily bendable and people to get through. But Nestle's willing to do it, doesn't meet their standard for security purposes.
What, what are they, what's security, are they worried about people breaking onto the site and vandalizing the trucks?
Well, the trucks are loaded with product and water and, you know, stuff can be, you know, cases of soda to be passed through a fence like that, cases of San Pellegrino. So, you know, that's why their standard requires a chain link. I mean, it's easily, it's easily bendable in and past products down through a picket fence.
Well, I think, and I appreciate you guys bending your rules. We have full tickets in the New York County Police Department. They're always on the streets, they're always present, and they do what I want to say is an unbelievable job in the town. So I think you're going to be very happy with them.
No, I'm, I'm sure, yeah.
For the clarification.
Why we were. Turned around.
So that's it then, Rich, we're pretty much done with the presentation, unless you have any questions.
Joe, one, can you speak, you know, because if anybody's listening in on the presentation, just talk about the lighting quickly and how it was modified. So we didn't have lights shining in the, in the direction to the oncoming traffic and, and not shedding light off the site. You made some modifications based on our prior comments.
All talk to the resident, that's a great point.
Right. Yeah, the, the previous iteration of the lighting plan, we had wall packs along this entire length of wall here. So we've eliminated most of them, we only have one at this corner here, because we just need to get this spot in here. But essentially, what we've done in order to meet the lighting standards that Nestle has, and to as closely as possible comply with the, with the standards of the town code, we've installed an additional light pole on this, on this frontage here facing in. So these, these lights will be facing in and downward. So we get the effect that we need to get the lighting in the middle of the parking area here. And in addition, by eliminating these wall packs, we've eliminated any potential for glare on, on traffic on two oh two that might be heading westbound. They would not be looking into those lights. So that, that's, that's the, that's the change that's represented on this lighting plan here.
And just to be clear, all loading and unloading of trucks is done inside the building?
That's correct. You know, once the trucks enter the site and they back in to the loading docks, everything is done internally.
So I, I think that was a question that John Tegger had too. So the building, the inside buildout and design is that such that the, the truck will completely pull into the building, right?
Yeah, I mean, as you could see, as you could see by the, you could see this, right, the plan?
Yes.
Yeah. So as you could see, you know, only the head of the truck is sticking out.
John, if I'm misspeaking, please let me know.
No, not at all. So, Joe, what's the state of the construction inside there?
I'll, I'll have to let Chris respond to that.
As far as the state in.
Of the loading dock.
They're, they're pretty much in place now. They're, they're, they're probably, I'd say eighty percent complete.
Is that a column line that it bugs up against?
Uh, not, in what, they're east to west or north to south?
The back of the truck.
Yeah, actually, we had to actually relocate, we did some structural work and relocated some columns so that it wouldn't interfere with the doors.
Wouldn't, what about where the actual dock is? You, did you move some columns there as well?
In the, the exterior.
The interior of the building, where the, where the back of the trailer connects up to the, to the dock, to the floor?
I think we relocated one column in that area.
One column?
Out, out at the front, we didn't relocate any columns, because the wall openings were, the panels were. One thing, most of these trucks, it's, there's drop and hook. So they, they won't be sitting there with the trailer sticking out. There's overhead doors and the, the trailers will be inside with closed doors.
So you're going to drop the trailer and the tractor will drive off? And how's that going to work?
No, they drop while they'll, what'll happen is the, the products will come in and they'll, they'll empty a trailer. And as the trucks unload the empty water bottles, they go in a trailer. So when, in, in the, during the day, when the trucks come in, they'll drop a full trailer, they'll drop an empty trailer, a full trailer of water and pull the, pull the empties out.
So in essence, the, for the most part, the garage doors will be closed most of the time when they're loading and, and unloading?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Because in the winter, you want, you don't want the water to freeze or the product. Well, it's heated. It, it can be a heated space. At this point, we have an alternate, we're not, for now, we're not installing the heat in that area. But it may, it may happen eventually, just because of budget.
Okay.
Chris, are those, the tractor and the trailer will both fit inside the building?
No, 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 they drop the trailer and the tractor hooks up, you know, takes the other trailer out.
Got it.
You know, and then he leaves and he goes back and, and so there's, you know, there's never a trailer sitting on it. The other drivers, they don't, the drivers don't sit there, they, they drive, it's called drop and hook.
Yeah.
Hook another one and leaves.
I just want to have, you know, have the public have a clear understanding that there won't be trucks sitting there idling with the headlights on, shining up, you know, into the southerly direction toward the residential properties for extended hours at a time.
Yeah, honestly, Emilio, you may want to just correct me on this. I believe those deliveries happened during the day, not, if not, correct, Emilio?
No, they happen, those, the, the, those big deliveries happen overnight.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's, that's something that may go on the actual site plan as an operational condition? So that's that's something that may go on the actual site plan as an operational condition? I think that that's worthwhile. I I have another. I have a question for Joe too.
Just want to, Emilio, I think there's only two deliveries at this site, right?
I'm sorry, what was that? Um, Chris?
Two deliveries per day? I think we only get two trailers at this site.
I think it would be closer to four, but they all happen throughout the nighttime because that's where when the warehouse crew is working there.
Okay. All right. Yeah, you're more up to speed on that piece of it. So.
What is it, John?
So the right turn out only, that is for all vehicles?
Yes.
So the the delivery trucks, I'm assuming that they are delivering in a the the area, not just to the east, right?
That's correct.
So how where are they going to be turning around?
They they will find a route to which they will have to turn around. Maybe they're going to go get a coffee at Dunkin' Donuts. I don't know. Um, how they're going to do that. They may have to, uh, make a left onto Stony and then come back on the Bear Mountain.
Uh huh. Because if if they're leaving, if they're leaving, you know, like six or six thirty in the morning, at least half of them. Is there traffic to be concerned with in terms of making left?
My my understanding is, uh, based on past discussions we we've had together, you know, with the board that that's kind of starting to end up, that's starting to be a peak time for traffic.
Okay.
It's starting to pick up around then. Um, I'm never down there at that time, so I don't know. I don't use that route. But based on discussions we've had, that's that seems to be the start of the peak time. So the right turns makes sense.
Right. The only thing is, like, if they decide to, if they need to go towards the peak scale area to or to the west, I don't think it would be a good idea to have six or eight or ten trucks using, for instance, Old Crompton Road to get back to go west as a residential road. Because that'll be.
John, are you familiar at all? Is there anybody else along that corridor? Where we, I'll call it a hardship, you know, where we kind of impose that kind of a hardship on the the tenant?
On this road? Uh, there there may.
Other, you know, commercial delivery vehicles, uh, pulling in and out of the everything from the Shell Station to everything else that's there. Um, seemingly they're free to make a left turn when it's safe to make the left turn.
Yeah, I think I think most of them are. Certainly, it is. It's a it's a problem on that corridor. I don't think that, to my recollection, and maybe Robin can remember one. I don't remember that. We have that on 202. We you may have it on the Taco Bell that you're that's in front of you right now. Uh, they are proposing that one right out. You know, cars are a little different and and the times of operation here are a little different. So I wouldn't want to see, like I said, eight or ten getting to the west by using Old Crompton Road.
Right. And did we ever? I know there was discussion at one point that the Bear Mountain Extension for some hours of the evening, it allows commercial traffic. Is that accurate?
It it was. It's I believe it is accurate. Now, I don't know if that's the little extension that we have, but certainly overgoing into the peak scale area and Crompton area, that section, I believe, seven see, there's seven to seven or something like that. Trucks can use it. At least it was that way for a while.
Right.
And Emilio, can you weigh in on how many routes may go westbound? Because I believe my understanding of this facility, that most of the, you know, being up against the river, that most of the stuff is is eastbound and south. So.
Yeah, I was just I was just looking at at the notes. Uh, um, yeah, and that is and that is correct. The majority of the routes, I cannot I cannot tell you exactly how many of them, but I can get back to you on that.
Okay.
Are are going that way. That's correct. And and the local folks, um, they just happens that the folks that will be based out of here, the the leaders and the supervisors, they're local to the area, so they're very familiar. They're actually the ones who suggested we should only do right turn, right turns out of the location because they know the area, they're familiar, and they know that that could represent some issues. And they are also working on on their plan because that adds time to their to their to their route time, of course, to the service time. So they're 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 working on on what are going to be the the this efficient and safe routes to get the the teams that need to go back the other way, uh, to to get that done.
And then, you know, there's a safety concern too, as far as on their part, making that left turn.
John, so it kind of sounds like.
Well, you missing anything on your end, Joe?
I was just gonna just follow up, you know, John, it just it it sounds like the amount of trucks that are going to need to circle back aren't aren't that many.
Okay, well, that that's good news. And if if Emilio could give us the data for the file, that'd be helpful.
All right, Joe, anything else?
Uh, I'm fine unless you have something for me.
Any comments from the board?
Yeah, I have a comment. I think that, um, it's very erroneous to have, uh, no left turn. If you're those tractor trailers coming out of there, fifty three footers. Where are they going to turn around? They're going to go down to the, uh, BJ's and 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 go and come back? I mean, I drove a trailer once and you're very conscious of what's going on. I mean, what don't these guys, uh, give them to give them the benefit of the doubt? They'll they'll move into traffic when they know they can. And if you try to get out from, um, any one of those, uh, like McDonald's and you want to go towards Peak Scale, there's a light down there that stops the traffic when the when the traffic, you know, towards Peak Scale, there's a light. I don't know the name of the street. Maybe it's Stony. I don't know. It's not Stony, but whatever it is, it's a light and you get a break in the traffic. Really, really, really good break in the traffic. And we're asking tractor trailers to come into a, I I don't I don't know. I don't understand how they're going to do it. You know, you got a big truck there. You got to turn them around. Where are you going to turn them around?
That's a good point. If if we're limiting the hours of the deliveries of the tractor trailers to the middle of the night, there's probably not going to be a lot of traffic there and it'd probably be easier to go left and go right and turn around, you know? I think you're thinking about the light at Lexingtonville.
Yeah, right. That's it. Lexington.
But now that I'm I'm hearing about the restricted delivery times, um, you know, there's probably not going to be, and and maybe Emilio can speak to this. Are they going to be between eight o'clock and twelve o'clock primarily or between twelve o'clock and eight? What is it? Ten ten o'clock at night to eight o'clock in the morning?
Eight to two P. Eight to two AM.
Eight to two. So we will have traffic in the evening hours then.
And John, the the, from my understanding, is the trailers actually are going to be coming down sixty. They're coming from Massachusetts. So they're actually going to be coming from the east and going back to the east.
Oh, okay.
I mean, you may, you know, you may get one that's going to go west. I don't know, but
Right.
Most of all the products coming in from six eighty four.
Okay. Yep.
So, you know, as far as trailers, but Will did make a good point because I've been there a lot. And I do notice that break in the traffic from that traffic light that's up, you know, towards the west. You do get that. You do get that break when that from that red on that light for whatever time that is. So it is a point.
Right.
Okay. Joe, anything else?
Nope.
John?
I'm good for right now.
Okay. Uh, Thomas, everything noted?
Yep, our neighbors have been notified.
Okay. Jim, any issues?
No issues.
All right, Robin, we'll open it up to the public. I know Mr. George always been waiting very patiently there. So.
That's that's quite all right. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
We can.
I would like to ask Mr. Russo to put that aerial photo showing the noise assessment locations back up on the screen.
Joe, you got that?
Yeah, hold on.
Okay.
Just so everyone can gain perspective on where I am.
You know, in some aspects, this works easier than the boardroom.
Yeah, so you have to use a magnifying glass on the screen here.
Okay, so I am the house to the west of thirty seven eighty four. I'm at thirty seven ninety. And all those woods back to the property line of the subject building is my property. From Old Crompton Road to the property line with the site, there's a total of about four hundred feet. Now, all those woods look wonderful in the aerial photo, but if you come here right now before another week or two passes, you can stand on my deck and count the bricks in the back wall of the, uh, the Verizon building. Uh, my time in this house goes back to when the Verizon building, uh, when Verizon was very active in the property and they had ten or twelve or fifteen line trucks going out, mostly in the morning. And, um, in the cold weather, they would they would go out and start them up and let them run and it would shake my house. The the bulldozer that they've been using on the property the last two months, he starts it up seven thirty every morning. If you're sitting in my living room in the front of the house, forty feet from Old Crompton Road, you can feel the vibration in the house. So and you'll see my property lines up directly with those loading docks. So I'm a little concerned about the noise of the truck motor itself, the backup alarm and the headlights. For one, and then, um, did those wall pack lights at the back of the building? Were they also changed or are those still going to be there? Verizon, a couple of years ago, when they were still there, had put new lighting in and it was hideous at night.
So those lights along the back of the building, um, are being replaced. Um, they're being replaced with with lighting at thirty eight, also could be pointed downward away from or not, you know, directly towards towards your property.
You wouldn't believe the light I get here from the diner. No joke. Uh, what about, I mean, can they put up some type of a wall like you'd have along, you know, Route two eighty seven, like a sound barrier? It's like twelve feet high or something that would block the light and the sound possibly?
Well, the the lights, the wall packs, and Joe and I discussed this, I think, the wall packs should be pointed down. And I'm more in favor of ones that are not adjustable and that are fully shielded, you know, and are in full compliance with the lighting code.
Yeah, that's fine.
What about the holes at the back of the property? Facing one.
Lamp posts at the back of the property up against the fence between my property and theirs pointing toward the building.
Those are being eliminated.
Any lighting should be fully shielded so you can't see the light source with your eye. That's the code.
And what happened with the discussion, Joe, with the webbing on the chain link fence?
Well, we when you're out there and you see the topography, clearly the the, you know, you have a site that's very flat, almost completely flat. And the angle of those headlights in comparison to where those homes are located, because they're quite there's quite an elevation difference. I think I I want to say we checked it was maybe these fifty feet elevation difference between the base of our parking lot and some of the back of those homes. So the lights are not going to be pointed directly at those homes. So I don't think any any slating in the fence is going to change anything there.
How about lining that back property line with Harbor Vitae?
Uh, there's 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 no place to put Harbor Vitae.
You could put them. You could put them on my property behind the fence.
That's the paper road, George, I think.
Well, no, it's my. I don't believe so. I think my property goes all the way back to the fence between Nestle and me. I don't I don't believe so.
You know, it does not because there's a paper road in between.
You have, there's a second lot that you own, I'm assuming, behind your house lot, but it ends at the fifty foot wide paper road.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, so the fifty foot wide paper road would actually be what butts up gets the Nestle property.
Correct.
And that's owned by Towne of Yorktown, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The town could give permission to put up some trees, some Harbor Vitae.
Do we? Do we have confirmation on that? Because paper roads are a very iffy situation. It could be half the property is owned by
Correct.
Three, seven, seven, five Crompton and half are owned by the other. It's very iffy.
I could try to find my survey, but I wouldn't expect you to wait for me to do that now.
Oh, but I, Mr. Campolo, it wouldn't be on there. It's where you have a road that's not been dedicated to the town and sometimes it falls back to the middle of it and it's split by the two adjacent property.
Yeah, I remember when they they came, they were talking about buying my second lot to put that low income housing about seven, eight years ago, nine years ago.
Never low. We never, town was never doing low income housing.
Not low income. I'm sorry, affordable. The the development went in first from BJ's. I'm sorry.
Right, exactly. That's that's it. Yep.
Yeah, Rich, when we did, um, when we did the, um, the MRI building, which is on the, uh, you know.
West.
Yeah, just west on the other side of the little cabin.
Yes.
Um, we we studied that. As a matter of fact, we had an exit for a future discharge point coming out onto Rec Recor Road. Um, the planning board had into that. And at that point, I don't know, John, I don't know if you remember, but I kind of remember it 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 was still a town. It was still in the town's possession at that point.
Yeah, we our our information that it's in the town's possession, but we haven't really looked that deep into it. We'll 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 try to do a little research on it, but I I believe it's in town ownership. And if, you know, there's always those conditions where people that are abut paper roads sometimes have certain rights that go to the middle of the road, which would then, uh, possibly give Nestle rights to the middle of the road too. But I don't think that the town gives up their rights, even if that's the case.
Yeah, and I think it came up in the Kia application too. Wasn't there something
Yeah, well.
way at the other end of it?
Yeah, and Yorktown Medical, we actually, um, did the site plan in a with an eventual eventual connection to the rear.
Right, right.
In anticipation of that becoming a road.
Jim, any input?
Yeah, I've had a lot of experience with paper roads. And you're right, the ownership is always somewhat nebulous. The fact that a road is mapped on a town map means there's an offer of dedication hanging out there that's generally never been accepted. And it can be accepted by the municipality at any time unless all property owners on both sides revoke their, uh, offer of dedication. There's also a line of cases that if this road appeared on a subdivision map, the filing of that is an implied offer of dedication to the municipality of the road bed. So it may be owned by other parties with what, for lack of a better term, I'll say an unaccepted but potentially accepted easement for, uh, road purposes hanging over it.
Okay, so at some point, the town decides they want to build that road. Ultimately, the town could accept to do that.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, Joe, you got anything else?
No, that's it.
John?
No, I'm I have nothing else at this time.
Thomas, you said everything's been noted correctly, right?
That is correct.
All right, Robin, we'll open up to the public outside of Mr. Campolo. Anybody else have anything to say?
Um, I don't see anyone. We did have, um, the other email just asking if the distribution center would operate during overnight hours. And if so, what will Nestle and the Towne of Yorktown do to mitigate the noise, including the truck reverse warning sound? So that was, um, one of the other neighbors, Mark Ioko of three, seven, five, six, Old Crompton, so the other direction.
Okay. I think Mr. Campolo has made some
Yeah.
thing and very to the point arguments. I think there's still some things we have to work out. So I would recommend at this point that we close the hearing and move it into work session and not deal with the resolution at this point. Anybody have any thoughts?
Don't move. You're going to keep it open for ten days? You gonna keep it open for ten days written comment?
Yes, please. Thank you, John. Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Campolo, please keep in touch with the planning department and stay in tune to what's going on.
Do I do that through Robin?
Yes, that would be best. Really appreciate you staying up so late for us.
Oh, that's okay. I appreciate all of you and thank you for your attention to this.
Thank you for your patience.
Russo, thank you very much for your very, very descriptive work in this area. Really, something else.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you. Alright.
Rich?
Yes.
Can I just ask one more question?
Sure, Robin.
Um, I just got a late question, just asking if there'd be fueling on the site.
Emilio? I think he's gone.
I don't think you had that on the plan.
No, Emilio is, Emilio is muted.
Sorry, I'm here.
I don't see his picture.
Yeah, hello. Yes, there will be, there will be fueling at the site. The, the majority of these trucks are propane-powered trucks. So there will be a vendor coming in to do fueling on site.
Okay, that's interesting.
Will you be doing, only propane will you be doing or, or gasoline and propane?
I think the majority of the trucks are propane. I can also get back to you with the actual mix. The, the, out of the, I think about twenty-eight trucks, I believe twenty or twenty-five of them are all propane. There might be some other, um, um, a small number of trucks that are diesel trucks.
Emilio, basically on what you're saying, it doesn't sound like you're planning on onsite storage of any fuel.
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
Wet fueling.
Correct.
Alright, we're gonna.
Thank you all, good night, thank you.
What was that? Hi, George.
Can, can we discuss this at, at your next meeting?
Absolutely. That would be a good idea.
Okay.
Alright, any other issues, comments? Thomas, thank you very much for going that extra mile and really, you know, getting into these backyards.
Yep, good job.
We appreciate that.
Thomas again.
He's got away with dogs.
He's credit to the town. He should have been working for Greenberg. Alright, guys, anything else?
No.
Nancy, do you wanna speak? Nancy? Sure? Alright, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Alright, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Robin.
Thank you, Robin.
Good night, everybody.
Alright, guys.